Yeah.
I am, I do this thing where I always could use more tonight.
Hey.
Because everybody's just crushed.
But you got that time where like thought we'd done right?
Right, right.
You know?
Yeah, when the teachers are gone, it's hard to.
We don't have actually.
You might not be able to call anytime there. They're wonderful.
I say those both.
Yeah, it's, it's. This is not. It's extrude.
Oh, no, it's not.
It's double duty.
Right, right.
But you know that you.
So she's, you know, my child wants to, schools might have been, you know, focused. That would be my problem is where do I go?
Well, I got you too. Thirty years ago.
Well, Natalie's here. We've got a side of computer and stuff too.
Actually, just goes to the classroom. Nobody's popping in the office. I got one of them in classrooms.
It's weak.
So he's just. Very blank.
They don't.
It's quiet. I heard.
No, much of what else is?
Which brings me to choices.
And now it's cold.
That's what they usually say.
It's awful.
Really went home.
It's a question.
That would be.
How is doing?
Thank you.
Right.
Yes, it's good.
Well, good luck in the next couple of years.
It's quick.
Natalie, they're partying up for the same rooms.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the middle one. The tree for everything. Sorry, but I want you to think. We're sending all the pages. Look at open.
I like it. It's easier on my hips if it's higher, so.
Okay, at six o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting as the business board's ordered. Meeting was properly posted on the tenth roll call.
Here.
Here.
Here. Deerson, Nicholson.
Here.
Ruland.
Here.
Schlemm. Springsteen.
Here.
We have a forum, we will conduct business. Item four, additions or corrections to the agenda. If there are none, a motion to approve. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ray, second by Troy, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item five, improvements from the last regular board meeting. I do have two suggested changes. Sue, I think we're dealing with. Appointing resolutions and so forth. Fifteen, this is the resolution designated, designated to the official of the high stories. I'd just like it to show Gary Harrop stepped away from the table and Ray Schlemm stepped to the chair. And then on sixteen, prior to motion by Jeff Deerson, Harrop will take the chair of the meeting. Any other additions or corrections to the minutes?
Maybe I should.
Motion by Natalie. Second by Jerry. Discussion, all in favor, everybody by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item six, appearances and significant correspondence. Anyone that has anything that is not on the agenda? And we have Len Rogan who's asking to speak on the trees. You're on.
Al?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Len Rogan and I live at Seventeen Bridge Street. And here's a picture of my house that will take me very long here. I've got trees in front of my house. I've lived there since nineteen seventy-seven, which will be forty-two years this September. And I have planted something like thirty-some trees. But the ones I planted in the front of the house, it's come to my attention that they're really on village property. But back in nineteen eighty, I didn't know anything and I just went ahead and called the Bruce Company and had six trees put in. Where I matter now with the trees, though, is that they're, they're planted too close for the long term. These are honey locust trees, sunburst honey locusts to be exact. And it's been great for the last thirty-some years that they've been there, but they are too close. And I've talked to two people, an arborist and the village forester, and they both agreed with me that it'd be wise to take out every other one of them and give them some more space. Because right now, I get a lot of dead branches because the shades essentially shade themselves, the trees essentially shade themselves and causes a lot of branches hanging down and make a big mess. They're, they're so weak by the time they hit the ground, if I can't, a lot of times I can't even get them to put in a pile of brush and it just, and eventually it's storm sweaters. So what I wanted to do is just take out every other tree. So rather than having six trees in front of the house, I'll have three trees in front of the house. And I know they're on village property and I'd like to get some help paying for it. But if I can't, I'll just go ahead and continue as I have for the last thirty-some years to take care of them myself. And I'll take care of removing three of them.
If you're not asking for village assistance, my sense is we could. Not the consent of the board, otherwise we're going to have to move this to the next.
I'm sorry.
My, my sense, Len, is if you're asking for village assistance on this, we're going to need to move it to the next meeting.
No, I don't.
Okay.
I donated once, I can continue making donations.
All right. Sue, do we need an agenda item for this or can we get a sense of the board?
Technically, it probably should be actum because it's village property.
Okay. Len, is it gonna, is it gonna disrupt your timetable if we approve this at the next meeting? May twenty-eighth? Or are you looking to take them down now?
I'd like to get them down before they come, all the leaves come out. It's gonna be a lot harder to do and a lot messier.
What you can do is do a consensus and then we can, we can put it on the board meeting for, for formal approval on the next agenda.
So is, is there a consensus of the board that let me permitted to remove three trees from village property at his expense?
Just one question, are you gonna, are you cutting them or are you gonna pull the roots? Are you cutting flush?
Oh, gonna, they'll be cut down. Ray Darrell was doing it, whatever he does with the stump makes a hole and he fills it with dirt, throws on some grassy.
There's consensus on the part of the board that you can go ahead, Len, and we'll formally approve it at the next meeting.
Anybody's willing to keep the pictures of my trees? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Len. Len was the only person that registered to speak. We're going to move on. Item seven, village president report, I have nothing. Item eight, village administrator report, he's in writing. Sounds like you've been learning the torties.
Yeah, big things for me tomorrow. You're downloading the handout and putting all the manual reads and see how many mistakes there are.
Where are we on, on Bug Tussle? What's the, where are the statements at?
Um, right now, they just returned their redline copy. They took out some of the stuff our lawyer put in, added some stuff that he took out, so he's gonna work with. He's negotiated them before, so he's going to work on it.
So we're not negotiating on price anymore?
No, the price is staying the same.
Contract.
Right. So, and it goes there, then it'll go to the, if, once the contract is approved, then it'll go to the plant commission for initial use permit and to the board for finality of altered contract and the initial use permit.
Can I ask again, I know we skipped this for some longer meetings, but just for those that don't have a board packet, can you read, can you read that, Peter? I mean, it's a short.
Sure.
Village administrator's report and it's just short, but it means I'm on the same page.
Okay. Highlights from four nineteen nineteen to five seven nineteen. Most of our flood related work has been filling in the gaps and reconciling receipts for our FEMA PA grant. Our project manager is trying to make our request, as I replied, as possible. We are providing receipts to back up receipts to back up receipts. All of this will help us get all the money we requested as soon as possible. I've been heavily involved in the utility billing, Tara's now gone for a month, so now it'll be me handling all the billing. We received another redline lease from Bug Tussle and our attorney has responded them. We are waiting for their response. I completed the financial summaries for both the general fund and the utilities. They're included in the board packet. I finished the recycling grant audit, we are approved, receive our full allotment. I've been working resolving ordinance violations. Currently, we are awaiting the results of fifteen letters that have been sent out.
Thank you. The flood work, the utility work and the ordinance violations are seventy-two hours in total. And then the overalls appear to be filling.
And I, and there's all sorts of different things I don't put in there.
Questions of Peter? Item nine, deputy in charge report.
Right.
Kyle.
Good evening. In total, in the month of April, we had a hundred and twenty-one calls for service in the village of Mezzo. Couple of things that you're going to see both in this April report and at the next meeting that I'll be at in May is there's been a little bit of a spike in terms of animal calls, the animal disturbance and animal dash stray and neighbor trouble. All three of those call types are all tied together and it's been related to one isolated type of incident. But the call types are showing up in all sorts, all three of these categories. The situation has since appeared to resolve itself, but you will see these types of increased numbers on next month's report too. Other than that, low numbers amongst all of the categories.
Questions for Kyle? Thank you, sir. Okay, items ten, the works report, eleven, Bandarred Commission, twelve, update on Dane Iowa, thirteen, update on EMS, our second board meeting of the month. Item fourteen, Lake Marion update. Only question.
Okay, Lake Marion update. The aquatic plants are behind schedule again, so what else is new? Because of the cold spring. So now it looks like they're not going to start planting anything until in July. We have no information on fish stocking, which I was under the impression that we had a grant for five to six thousand dollars for fish stocking. Mark says he has no information.
No, we didn't have a, it, that could be included in the fisheries grant, but because it's coming so late, we're at the end of the life of the grant. And because Robin Gomery's group told us that the actual fish would be around a thousand dollars, that we were just gonna not, not be able to add it to the grant. But then the sportsman's club was gonna help pay for it.
I think they know that.
The sportsman's club knows that they were paying for fish, at least when I talked to Brad, that they were paying for it.
That's not to my knowledge, but I haven't made the last two meetings, so.
Okay.
But anything, anyhow, that's about it for Lake Marion and Mark's guy. I know it's still holding water. I know the geese and ducks are starting to take home in that lake. And if we don't go back to our original idea about getting rid of them, you're gonna have all the phosphorus in the world in that lake and the water's gonna be screwed. What bothers me the most, if the DNR doesn't let us get rid of the geese and the ducks, then why are they trying to push on us with our sewer plant down here to get rid of all the phosphorus before it goes into the creek? But yet they're letting all the geese and all the ducks in there poop two to four pounds a poop a day. That's for every duck and every goose. So if you want to see like two or three semi-loads a month just going into that lake, then there goes your beautiful lake.
Didn't we, weren't able to work out something with sportsmen?
We are, but a couple of people have come up with the idea that we had to get a permit from the DNR, which we were just going to do it.
Not if you go out in the midnight.
Well, I, we'll go out in the afternoon and just shoot towards the corner for this. Then I'll take care of that.
All right.
Okay. And I have one more thing I'd like to bring up that we passed over. Mark wanted it brought up tonight. If you go up to the public works report behind Kevin Murphy's house, if I can talk about that a second. There's that man, there's that sanitary sewer system there that we've talked on and off of for the last twelve years. Mark tells me now that he took Tom DeBeck, TeBeck, I think it is his name. He's the understudy to Brian with Homing Country. And there's only about six foot of erosion left before we get to the man or the sanitary sewer. So Mark told Tom and I backed him up and they're going to try to implement some sort of a plan. And I wanted to bring it up tonight. I don't want Mark in hot water, but according to DeBeck, that is really, really gonna be a problem here real shortly. Okay.
I think that comes under emergency conditions and I would, I would move on that. Years ago, this is Murphy property that was owned by Johanning at the time. The then public works director allowed the sewer lateral to be put diagonally across the back of Johanning's property. Johanning's concurred with that. Now that creek bank is being beaten away and it's coming close to that line, so they're saying we gotta move on that and move fairly quickly. If everyone's in agreement with Mark and Ray have a solution to this and they're moving.
What we hold.
Quickly with.
Yes. And that's what Tom said. He said, we need to act on it as quick as possible. Okay. Then that's it for Mark.
Well, we're talking about Lake Marion. Is the canoe and kayak launch, are they able to take a canoe or kayak into Lake Marion? Question mark. Yes, they can use that launch and that's. No swimming.
No, correct. But I was gonna ask, where are the signs?
Yeah. Just. Mark, where are those?
I'm not marking.
Squashing. I think Mark's information. I was under the impression that Mark was going to look into signs and if it was supposed to be my responsibility, I'm sorry.
I'll help take care of it.
Yeah, would you check with Mark and get moving on this fairly quickly?
Get on it, Mark.
I will take care of it, but I'll be ready then.
Okay.
Okay. All right, there is no update on Mezzo twenty twenty committee, sixteen violations of property by the municipal.
You guys have a list in front of you of some addresses. There's seven tall grass ones. I will check those over again tomorrow and make sure they haven't got them cut and then I'll send out letters for that. There's one more junk vehicle added to the list that we had last time. Kyle went and checked on it for me and he's gonna be talking to the owner about it. So if nothing happens with that, then the letter will be going out from that from the police department.
Questions? Pretty none. Moving now to seventeen clock update.
The only update I have is on the administrator's report is what we're working on with DA. Oh, I, I'm meeting Del funny tomorrow. We're gonna be discussing covering the villages portion of the, of the buyouts and also what we need to get in place to help out the one eighteen Curtis with getting into the floodway.
Anything more on flood update? Any questions?
I have one question about like those handful of properties that have like been vacated. Like what's the next step? Not as far, I mean, I don't know, condemning's the next step, but what's the next step when like, are you gonna do something with this and when kind of thing? I mean, who, does Tracy follow up on that kind of stuff?
Tracy would handle that if, if he's condemning properties. Cause he's, not that he's condemning anybody, but he's already working on Curtis Street, which wasn't involved in the flood. But as far as up the building in bad shape, he's, he's on top of that. So he would be handling that. The initial contact would be through him.
Cause I knew like before we were kinda gonna hold off, let everybody get their ducks in a row, but you know, obviously it becomes a little bit of a.
Right.
A worry, just that, you know.
As it becomes a safety or health concern, Tracy would be the initial contact on that and.
But for instance, I know some addresses are still fighting with insurance companies. So I don't know if like, you know, does somebody follow up with some of these that haven't been lived in since.
Tracy's first contact would be with the owner. So if there's something that he can work out, I mean, he's.
What triggers Tracy to do that?
If.
Out of complaints or something?
On complaints or on his own sometimes. He'll just see that the property's in bad shape when he's around. Otherwise, we'll point it out or the police officers will point out a property to him for him to inspect.
Tracy will generally work with people in case you try to get insurance. In fact, he will work with people unless there's a, a health concern, a safety concern. And that's where he would step in. Now, if, if Tracy can't step in legitimately in, in a condemnation situation, you wait three years for bad property taxes.
When I spoke to Tracy, he, you know, said, you know, we had left it at, that nobody was gonna be condemned at this point while they work out insurance and whatever. And that, you know, as he, exactly kind of what you said, as he saw properties, but you know, I, I don't know if there's a way we can kind of identify these properties to, you know, follow up on or how, you know.
I can talk to Tracy and tell him to.
I think Mark, I think if Mark has a list of ones that, you know, he, that he would replace, checked up on, like what are you planning, where are you at with this? And as we've been making the calls, that's kind of something we're running into too. Like what's the next step or are they condemned or will they be condemning? Just a nice answer though, you know.
Well, and that would be one of the steps we would take.
About be more Tracy's deal.
Tracy would initiate that, yeah.
Okay.
Any further questions on flood? Not, we're gonna move into old business. And one, review of conditional use permit for GNC Auto. I asked that this be added. A year ago, the board voted to. Remove the annual review, which was initially, initially. Condition of GNC Auto continuing to have this condition of use permit. They were limited to.
How many vehicles? Seven vehicles.
And just recently, they exceeded that number again. You checked on that?
Yeah, I drove by last night, there were twenty-five vehicles. Now, I don't, don't know how, how networks have stocks. This morning, I drove by before they opened, there were twenty-one vehicles there, but ten parked and some of them double parked right in front of the building. So I'm not sure how they exactly work for theirs, but there's an awful lot of cars parked there.
Given the, given the number of vehicles, I would just suggest that we reverse our decision of last year and that we continue to review this on an annual basis.
I, I mean, it's, if you can't, have you approached them and asked them, you know, or seen?
Yeah, no, the police.
Have been in contact with them?
At the last meeting.
And have they been agreeable? I mean, have they?
They've been agreeable, but they were over the limit.
Right. I mean, it's just so hard. I, I hate to, it's just not supporting that local business. I mean, of course, that's what they're in the business of doing is having, you know, cars there, broken down cars there, cars that they can't get back unless the payment's made there.
They may have to move closer to the industrial park, get out of the downtown area. All I'm suggesting, folks, is that they exceeded their numbers and this bears further watching. Motion to monitor this on at least an annual basis.
Someone?
By Jerry.
I'll second it.
Second by Ray, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries.
One other thing, are they gonna get a letter knowing that we're going to be monitoring them a lot?
Yeah, the communication's the best thing for the situation.
Yeah, I mean, I'm making conform a little bit more. One other back on the.
Doc is over here.
Sue's gonna take care of that, good suggestion. Okay. Item two, appoint alternate for board of review. That's the last appointment that was necessary for you to receive your completed standing for this board. Dick Royston has served as an alternate for many years. He couldn't last year, so he was replaced temporarily. He's agreed to step back in as an alternate. Motion by Scott to approve Dick as an alternate.
Second.
Second by Natalie, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion is carried. Item three, discussion on relocation or elimination of Rushdown. Ray.
Okay. I had him talk face to face.
Are you Ray or Mark?
I'm Ray now. I'm left-handed now. If I'm Mark, I'm right-handed. I think he's right-handed.
Yeah.
I had that conversation with Scott Dewer, who has approached his dad and his uncle Bobby. And they are willing to sell us a section of land off of Emily behind Ruman's auto body, her repair, and their granite shop, which I don't think they use that much anymore. But they wanted some say in where the boundary would be north to south. And from what I understood from Scott, it was just so they could drive back there, they could turn around. They didn't want it like real close to the old buildings, but they had room back there. And then if I recall right, the section of land that Mark has dotted out here is an acre of land. And budding up that on the west side is our property. It's a windrow that goes through there, a bunch of trees. So the backside of it is completely covered. The north side of it is pretty much a hundred percent covered. And the south side is pretty much a hundred percent covered. And the east side is covered because of all the buildings.
Where's the driveway gonna be? Where's the driveline gonna be for that?
The driveway's right there already, Troy.
Okay, I know what you're driving.
Off of Emily.
Okay, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's right behind your dad's place. So I will talk more to Brent and Bobby and I will get the ball going there. And then I will not be here for the next meeting, but I hope for the first meeting in June, maybe I'll have a price for this.
And, and if you can get a price by the next meeting, Mark can do the presentation.
Okay, well, I'll try.
Can we reiterate?
He can do it. It'd be nice to be left-handed.
Um, can we reiterate that Mark believes that now within the village limits, I mean, it is right now, but we would no longer refer in.
Right.
We would be chipping.
We don't wanna burn.
Right.
We don't wanna burn. So I would think down the road, we're gonna use limitations on the size of the brush that's gonna go in there. And then we're gonna have to figure out some sort of a gate system for security. But that's down the road, we, they have to get the property first.
Do we have any Plan Bs?
Well, there was a Plan B and a Plan C and a Plan D, but we haven't approached those people yet.
Okay, so there's, those are other options.
There's three other places in town. And two of them, I think, are maybe a good idea, but you'd almost have to fence them pretty good. But here, you've got natural fencing. And that's it.
We should have a motion. If you're in agreement, proceed with discussions with the Dewers. The possible purchase of roughly a one acre parcel for uses of Rushdown. Motion. Motion by Scott.
Second.
Second by Natalie, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed by the same sign, motion is carried. Bill is your cohort here tonight?
It's not, he's, uh, struck throat.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna move into new business.
So can you show that I'm leaving the table?
Yes. We're moving to new business. Item one, discussion on the vacation of that portion of Franklin Street lying north of Ann Street and dissecting property is owned by Wisconsin High School district of John and Jerry Springsteen. Peter, show Franklin Street.
So Franklin Street is this. This is Ann Street.
That's Ann Street. Show where the elementary school is.
Elementary school's here.
And the old Methodist church, right here. Okay, the Methodist church is owned by John and Jerry Springsteen. How many board members, show the, show the north portion of Franklin Street. How many, that's, that's directly between the elementary school and the Methodist church. How many board members knew that that was a village street? Sorry, he's playing kickball for his school.
We're still playing kickball.
Then when he got to be sixteen, they would launch on him.
That's right. That's right. It's never been maintained by the village, the village doesn't plow it. It's, I believe that's, that's all asphalt, the village didn't install it. There are no utilities in that area. Mark worked with Town and Country, and you see, running along Ann Street there, the blue line is.
Water.
And the red is sewer.
Sewer.
And so, the utilities do not go into that, call it an alley, if you will, between the, the two buildings. Now, the request to vacate is being made by both the Wisconsin Night School District and the Springsteins. Sue contacted Bill Cole, our attorney at Axler Brimson, and I'll read what he said, and I think you have this in your package. The vacation can be initiated in one of two ways. By petition of the adjoining property owners, which is fairly easy, and one-third of the owners of the frontage within two thousand six hundred fifty feet of the end of it have to agree to the vacation. Now, two thousand six hundred fifty feet is a half mile. So, everything, Peter, point to that intersection. Everything from that intersection within a half mile of that frontage, all those people have to be notified, and a third of them have to agree to the vacation. So, that's a fairly lengthy process. The, upon vacation, ownership of the land reverts to the owners of the parcel.
Maybe, it's right.
From which the right-of-way came, if that can be determined. I don't know. I'm in a board meeting, if your records go back that far, which you should start looking.
Oh, no, that's our.
Yeah, the board meeting, I'm sorry. See who.
No, but same time, same station.
Where that parcel came from. If it can't determine, that's fine.
It's on, it's on that on the plot for, for, ever as long as I know.
Okay, if it can't be determined, the land is equally divided between the, the property owners. The second way a property, a street can be vacated is by resolution. We did this with the Loudon property over here, just a couple of.
Last board meeting, yeah.
Last board meeting. That would require a resolution being introduced at the board, I think publication.
Three times.
Three times in the paper, then the resolution is brought back to the board for approval. I followed up with Bill Cole on vacation utilizing a resolution, which is easier, obviously, than the petition that was just described. Board-initiated vacations are fine, as long as the vacation is not going to be controversial. If it would, my advice would be to make the residents file petition. If it will be uncontroversial, it is simplest to do it by board-initiated resolution. There is very specific statutory process to do this. As such, he drafts everything and controls the timing of things. Now, there's a cost to that, not just hour of attorney's time, but the cost of surveying and recorded costs. So, my advice is to, if you go the resolution route, require those parties that want the vacation to agree to cover all costs the village will incur. You'll draft the agreement, they'll sign, so that's the first thing that happens. So, there would be no cost to the village in vacating this north portion of Franklin Once that's received, I then draft, have the resolution prepared and present for introduction to the village board. Now, the issue is that you have to decide tonight, is this controversy? Jerry's a city board member. I'm asking Don and Jerry not to take part in the discussion tonight, and solely have the school district present their reasons for wanting this vacation and the benefits to the school district. And I think, Dale, you're going to handle it then tonight?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so Dale Green, our Mesa Elementary Principal, we'd like to have you, why don't you come a little closer to the table?
Okay. Well, the Springsteins and myself, along with Jordan Sins, our superintendent, we've met numerous times, walked the property, they have looked at it. It's really simple for the school district. Two main reasons why we would agree and we like the idea. It's going to provide clarity, just where the property is, that property is for sale. Right now, it's, it's open, and there's no barrier between the two. And as mentioned earlier, that area is used for our recess area, that's where kids get dropped off in the morning, the buses pull up there, parents drop off, so there's a lot of kid movement in that area. So, by vacating, it would provide clarity with where the property line would be, and our intention would be to actually put a fence up on the border of the two properties. So, it's very clear, so whoever purchases the property, they're on that side of the fence, and the school district, and the kids can stay on the other side of the fence. It's just very clear. With that, with the putting of the fence, the second piece is, it's just going to be safer. It's just going to provide safety feature that we think will benefit our kids. It's very clear, and, yeah, it, it won't be a huge deal to put that structure in place. Questions you have for us?
So, that's split, it's really thirty-six feet apiece, how much, like, so that fence is going to go into, right in the middle of where the asphalt is currently, or?
Well, we've talked about the possibility, and I'm going to generalize here, but we're going to come to an agreement, more of a sixty-forty.
Sixty.
So, sixty percent to the school district, and forty percent to the other property. And just how it looks and where it lies in there, and where that driveway is, and there's a fire hydrant on the Springsteen side of it, so we would use the same driveway, both properties would use that, that larger driveway there. And basically, the fence would be not in the middle of that, but in an area that seems to, it just seems to make sense.
So, it would allow a driveway to be for the property?
Correct.
So, that's, there's no street parking.
Right. The fence wouldn't come all the way out to the sidewalk, it would be set back a little bit, we'd put a big corner post there, probably something decorative, and, and so they would have access on that side, and we'd have access on the other side. We've talked to Mark with the village, and, you know, for the fire department, you know, any safety goes, I need to be in there, plenty of room, shouldn't be any issues down that front.
Dale, we're going to have to maintain thirty-three foot right-of-way from the center line of the street.
Right.
For municipal purposes.
We measured that out, yeah, we walked that, and we actually obtained measure, and we have a pretty good idea right where that is.
I had a discussion with Jordan about, he questioned whether, and Bill Cole referred to here, that if we can't determine who the original owner of that property was, of the north portion of Franklin Street, the right-of-way, then the property is equally split between the two parties, and that's statutory.
Right.
We can't, as a village, we can't say sixty-forty, so you and the Springsteins would have to have some type of an agreement on that.
Correct.
You and the Springsteins would have to have some type of agreement between the two of you on cost sharing for this project. So, the village would come, if you folks in good conscience say this benefits the school district, it doesn't appear to be controversial, we would first come to you with an agreement, and both parties would sign, saying you would pay the cost, we don't care who pays what percentage. And then, there would be a resolution presented, introduced here at the board. So, this is all agreeable to you?
It is, and, and that's not a surprise to us, I mean, we understood that, that is.
So, let's have some board discussion.
Who owns the, the three-fourteen, the lot behind it? Is that school district?
That's the district.
It is the district.
Which is the three-fourteen?
It's, it's, it's the one we counted. So, it's actually, like, school district would have that whole road, and then it would be split only to that point.
Correct.
Oh, so there's, there's a lot of benefit to you.
Yeah, so the fence would be, you know, there's, there's an existing fence here that are, and so essentially, there would be a fence that would be put in.
Okay.
There. And our fence actually runs all the way to here. This is all district as well.
Right, you wouldn't, you wouldn't run that fence all the way down to the, to the street, you'd be.
Thirty-three and a half feet, or whatever we.
Okay, so there's still line of sight in case someone's backing out, kids are walking across the sidewalk, but it's, it's there.
There's really no vehicles that use that during the school day.
No.
It gets used, you know, sometimes for concerts in the evenings, or parent-teacher conferences, sometimes it gets used, teachers coming in on weekends, you know, look, hold in there.
Sliding on snowy days.
And, and parents use it, you know, to access the playground. I mean, that, that's when it does use.
Well, doesn't an ordinance say that they have to be five feet off of the, the center line, where that property division is? That fence can't go on the property division. It has to be five feet off.
Two feet.
Then, I had it be five feet.
It used to be three.
Huh?
It used to be three.
Three and two are five, Ray, that's what it came out.
I'm turning to Mark. I know, I, I'm sure that they told me five, and that's what we did when we put the fence in. And then, when we built the garage, we went eight feet off of the boundary line.
Yeah, eight feet for that.
And then, also, if they cut that fence and cross that property, three-fourteen, they're crossing Jerry and John's land, right? Because if you separate that, doesn't that go all the way to the east and west boundary? Separate Franklin Street?
I think what they're saying is they're going to wrap it up and around.
Well, I know that's what they're saying, but if you were vacating Franklin Street, wouldn't it go all the way to the north, or the east and west division?
But they'd split it this way and this way.
That's all this is there, is there, because this is their.
Yeah, because they've got balls.
I know what everybody's saying, but if you're getting rid of Franklin Street, just like Gary said, it's an even fifty-fifty split. So, if you're getting rid of Franklin Street, then won't Springsteen own it all the way to the boundary that goes east and west?
No, what?
It would be a fifty-fifty split along the property lines.
The school district already owns that parcel behind.
Behind that they do, behind that east and west boundary.
Right. So, it's split between the property owners. The school owns both of them, they get it all.
Okay. And actually, currently, the school's been very fortunate with the Springsteins as neighbors, because, you know, during the school day, they're, they're always very careful, you know, they don't, they don't drive in there, there's, they're just always well aware of, you know, the, the kid situation, any new property owners, you just never know, you know what, and so, just looking down the road, it seems to make sense.
Now, this would be, the decision of the board is going to be reviewed by Bill Cole before we proceed to defer to this, to whether he feels that it's not controversial, given the amount of land according to the school and Jerry's seat on the board here. What are your thoughts? Resolution or petition? Some use for the streets, resolution's a lot easier.
I think trying to explain it to everyone in the neighborhood, most of us don't know it, and so, we'd have to spend a lot of time trying to explain it to people, and it will create more misunderstandings. But the petition, just, it would take a long time. I think a resolution might be better, better route also.
Well, and I think, in, in this particular case, it's the, the school district that has primary benefit here, and there is overriding concerns with safety of the children. So, I, personally, I favor the resolution route myself.
You guys just going to use it for a driveway?
Right. The safety is the biggest issue, and that is an overriding issue for people even looking at it, that this is an unresolved situation, and the feeling that, oh, it's a road we could drive in there, it's, it feels uncomfortable, the fact that it's actually a playground being used that way.
Ray? Matt, is it?
Natalie?
I think it's, it benefits the school more than anybody, and especially looking at their property lines there. Like, it is a safety issue, should be clear defined lines for that property.
Is there then a motion to proceed by resolution if we gain concurrence of legal counsel of the village?
Motion?
Motion by Scott.
Second.
Second by Troy. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, by the same sign. The motion is carried. The record also showed that this is the first discussion we've ever had with Kerry Springsteen, it's quiet. Okay, last evening, item two, land division of lots sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, lot seventeen located at one-twenty-one Broadhead Street, east-west, a request to be made by Tom and Ray in Loudon. Last night, the plan commission met, and this request was denied based on recommendations from Bill Cole at, at Axler Brimson. Here's what, here's what Bill says, and he has two primary reasons, given current ordinances, for not approving this. I believe the proposed land division would be inconsistent with the public requirements on several counts. First, insufficient frontage, none, on a public street. Both lots, as proposed, neither would front the village street, and Bill's ordinance four-ten-twenty-six, all lots shall have a minimum of fifty feet of planted frontage on a public street to allow access by emergency and service motor vehicles. Alley frontage, public or private, shall not constitute meeting this minimum frontage requirement. He also referenced ordinance four-fifteen-twenty-one D sub-two, there's a minimum lot width required of seventy feet, and one of the proposed lots would have a lot width of fifty-four point thirty-three feet. Those were the two primary reasons that Bill recommended to the plan commission that the request be denied. He also pointed out minimum yard setbacks and parking, adequate parking, off-street parking for commercial and industrial purposes. And then, went on to say, assuming the proposed division is not compliant, it would be fault the applicant to be to submit a variance. However, it would be very difficult for them to meet the standards for granting, since the non-compliance is almost certainly itself an import hardship. The plan commission denied the request. This would be brought to you to gratify, to approve the plan commission, or override it.
Well, I have interest in this, because I'm the one who wanted to buy the property.
Well, you can't take part in this discussion.
I won't, but I want to say something.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mark.
I will. And there's no problem with any emergency vehicle getting in between either one of those buildings. They're far enough off the public highway that, as far as I'm concerned, and I'll say it in front of everybody, he's getting shat. and I'll say it in front of everybody, he's getting shafted.
Okay, you can't take part in this vote.
And that's all I'll say right now.
You can't take part in this vote.
I'm not, I'm not gonna take part in that.
The village ordinances are specific.
Mm-hmm. But they're also, also very forgiving to certain people. And I don't wanna bring up names right now because I've been on the board for quite a while.
I would like to ask, though, if they did show the availability of an easement, and they didn't have that, would that change?
Nope.
It wouldn't?
Nope. The ordinances are specific.
But presently, they have, they presently own one large lot that is, in essence, landlocked.
Well, they have an easement. They have a twenty-foot easement going in there.
Right.
And it's not landlocked. They can continue using that access point.
And Exchange Street can't be used as an access unless that's...
No.
Okay.
So, they don't own this area?
So, they don't own where the hairdressing old lumberyard is?
Yes, all of them own it.
So, they purchased that property, which they, without the further, the cost of that, right? Well, that's unfortunate.
Yeah, it is.
So, it's not really sellable, then?
Well, they can sell the entire...
Yeah, they can sell the entire thing. I pointed out to Tom, what he could do is sell it in its entirety. And he wants to use a barn for storage of lumber. He can enter into a long-term lease. And those payments can reduce the debt service for the person buying the entire property, which accomplishes essentially the same thing.
You have time to tell about that?
Yes, last night. So, the recommendation from the plan committee was to deny what's coming to you for ratification.
One more question. So, on the map, it says Eldred Street vacated with a question mark. Is that street vacated yet?
No. There's...
So, there is a street that could access both of those lots?
Eldred Street, right, no.
Is that in?
Yeah, it's not in, it's, it's...
It's High Street.
Yeah, and there's transformers and electric stuff in there.
I'm sure the plan commission did their due diligence. I'm just asking.
Motion.
So, one more question? So, El, Exchange Street that comes in from the feed mill?
Yes.
So, the feed mill parking lot is actually Exchange Street, right?
Possibly, I don't know.
So, they would have access that way?
It's not a...
Not, not Eldred, but Exchange Street comes in.
Exchange Street is like a middle...
Right, but it goes all the way through over to Crocker, so...
It's not...
But it's not, yeah, it's not a developed street.
Yeah. It's gotta be a developed street, Jerry.
All right, all right.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to ratify the action taken by the plan commission last evening to deny the request. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Troy. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Moving on. Item three, formal disallowance of the subrogation claim presented by State Farm as super B of Gary Gurney, bearing claim for damage to a vehicle by the Mesa Mani Snowpaw two twelve nineteen. So, what's happened here? Gurney was insured by State Farm. As part of his policy, he has agreed to step out of the picture, to subrogate in favor of State Farm so that State Farm could go against the village's insurance carrier. Statewide Services administers a claim for the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, which ensures the village of Mesa Mani. They reviewed the matter. They recommend that the village of Mesa Mani deny the claim pursuant to the Wisconsin statute for disallowance of claim, eight ninety-three point eight oh, one G. They, their investigation revealed that Gurney's vehicle was majority at fault for the accident. Gurney's vehicle disregarded the rules of the road and did not keep a safe distance of at least twenty feet from when the village's stops. Statutory issue. Recommendation is to disallow the subrogation claim presented by State Farm. Questions?
Was it, I understood the vehicle? And was it...
No, it was no issue. Right.
Yeah, it was unfortunate. There are motions to approve the disallowance?
Yes.
Second by Scott. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign? That motion is carried. Item four, remitting CDBG ED funds back to the state of Wisconsin Department of Administration. Sue is going to explain that.
Back when Sonny Industries went in, the village participated in a community development block grant for economic development. And we had, I think they had borrowed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and they had paid it all back. But then when Sonny was in there, they got a loan. The state strongly recommended the village give him a loan of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we lost it because one of their people absconded money. And so, we've got right now about thirty-nine thousand, thirty-nine thousand, forty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents in the account. The state of Wisconsin is now calling all of these programs. They wanna close it. It's called their closed program. And you can't give any more loans. And so, this is just to send the money that we've got in that account back to the state.
Sue mentioned Sonny. The village didn't extend that loan. As I recall, that directive came right out of the governor's office.
Yeah.
Said you gave them the money.
Right, because they were, the state was gonna give them a half million dollars. The only way they would get that money is if we gave them our hundred and fifty.
Is there a motion to approve remitting those CDBG ED funds back to the state of Wisconsin? By Natalie.
Second.
By Jerry. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. That motion is carried. CMR report, I think this is just information?
We have to approve it.
Okay. You're the utility expert, Mel.
Actually, Terrence Mark put this together. But if you'll see it in the back page, it has the score. Basically, it turned out to be a perfect score. We have the marks against us. So, we're not in any range that we have to do any kind of response back about this. That's pretty much where the village usually ends up every year. Because we always do well on that.
This is for the, just the infrastructure of the sewer.
And not having a sewer plant kind of greases this program long.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Motion to approve?
Motion.
By Troy.
Second.
Second by Natalie. Discussion.
Good job.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. That motion is carried. I'm going to vacate, and Ray is going to take over.
For me?
I mean, not for me, Mark.
He's gonna be here.
Well, that's my taking over. If I was here, I'd have to leave too. There's an application being made for, by the Martinez's, Justin and Jennifer, for a Class B beer license and a Class B liquor license for the old bed and breakfast on State Street. And the new dwelling, I believe, is to be called the Iron Anubis Inn. The Martinez's are from Middleton. I believe their background check was fine. So, the only thing that we have to agree upon and discuss tonight is a contingency to the license. As of this moment, they don't own the property. They're in the process of securing the property. So, my suggestion to the village board is to give them ninety days to complete their closing, and then they can apply for their liquor license. Suzie, today called the league, makes it all legal.
They've already applied for it. What you're doing is approving the contingency.
Right, right. So, just wanna make everybody sure they knew about the contingency because they don't own the property yet. Any questions?
So, when they own the property, the contingency, will we have to have another board meeting? Or...
No. No, this will be the end.
Unless they go beyond ninety days.
And then, and then it was suggested that maybe we put the condition of the license, the approval of the license on the closing, or, you know, that they, that the sale does go through.
Remind you, Sue, are there unlimited numbers of these licenses?
Two more.
We've got, yeah, we've got five.
For liquor or for both?
For liquor. And we've got, we've got five licenses because we were grandfathered in. Otherwise, it's one per five hundred population. But we had five when that law went into effect. Right now, we have three. We have four. One of them is the old feed mill. When the old feed mill went in, it was under a restaurant that could serve three hundred people. And it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't go against our quota. So, we have three under the quota, so we have two available.
And this would be...
This would be, yeah.
And then what about for beer and wine? Is that, is that limited, only number licenses?
Beer is not, but wine is because wine, you can't sell under a beer license. You have to have a liquor license.
Oh, so if you wanna just sell wine, you'd want one of those leftovers?
You could, if you're, if you're a restaurant, you could get a Class C wine license. But otherwise, you have to have a liquor license to sell wine.
So, if I'm correct, these are these next two agenda items, we would have zero left?
No, because no, it is a beer license.
And that number's just based on the village numbers, not village town, it just...
It's just the village.
I remember that we accept their application.
Second.
Motion by Gary, second by Natalie.
With the conditions?
Yes, with the conditions.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Open the meeting.
Come on.
Let's just, let's just go right through and then call the meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, tell them to come back.
Should I?
Class B beer license.
Number seven on the list. Class B beer license for the Taco Man located at six oh three West Commercial Street. Do we have a background check on him, it's done?
Yes, and I didn't find anything in the background.
Seems to be good.
Make a motion to approve.
Why does it say liquor is to be sold at the bar?
I don't know, unless he means...
Beer?
It's a Class B beer license.
Yeah, it is, it's a beer license.
Does he know that?
Do we have a second before we can discuss?
Second.
Okay, I checked with him and he said it was a beer license.
Well, he can always come back.
Right, we would have another liquor license, but he would have to complete a new application. It's considerably more expensive to get a liquor license than beer.
I would definitely make it clear that they understand that what they put in there is not consistent. Because we're all looking at beer.
Because who doesn't wanna ride Dorito with Taco?
Ah, it's a good point.
It would be liquor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Hey, Gary, you're here again. You're at number seven.
Eight.
Your number...
Operator's licenses for license for Jessica Marie Lardle. Background check is complete.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion. Is there a second?
Please, motion.
Scott?
Second.
Second by Natalie. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed by the same sign? Motion carried. Okay, we're into committees. Personnel, I have nothing. Public Works and Property, Ray has nothing. Parks and Rec?
I'd like to schedule a walk around Parks. It'd be good. That first Tuesday in June, meet at the Bluff, go down and walk through there, then go to Appleby Circle and end up at Lions Park. And have any contact people around there.
We can drive between the places.
Get a wig, follow me. Get a wig and then pull it off.
East corner.
I don't know, I'm gonna be in Canada.
No. Is that working? So, we'll contact Jeff, but right now, let's do it for... What time did you say? What'd you say? Three o'clock, four o'clock? Let's do, let's do four o'clock on June fourth, Parks meeting. To meet at Mesa Bluff, then go to Appleby Circle Park, end up at Lions Park. The rest of you are all invited to come walk with us. I think we got a new steward of the Bluff. Denny Connor has been doing it, and his bad knees, and he hasn't been able to do it. And Russ and Dale Dango, who live at the base of the hill, have said that they would take over. So, tomorrow, there's, Denny's gonna walk the bluff with them, show them the ropes. And so, that's really good for us that we have volunteers to share our parks. That's it.
Okay, public protection and ordinance, I don't think Jeff has anything right now. Finance, Troy.
Probably need to get it together. We need to start looking at something.
Are you talking about the budget?
Yeah.
That's usually August or so.
August.
Yeah.
I love that guy.
Just ready to get into that budget. Come on, let's go.
That's good, that's great.
I don't have anything at this point.
Other than making a motion for payment of bills?
Yeah, I guess we have to do that, don't we? Let's make a motion for payment of bills.
Second by Scott.
Troy, do you have a copy of the last year's project?
Not yet, but I'm willing to be asked. I actually, I have my email set up finally this week, so now I can start.
Do you either have a hard copy or a...
Okay, I'm gonna skip back here. We got a motion and a second. There's a discussion on payment of bills.
Yes. EMS, I don't see where they pay utilities. Is that on a, an alternating? How does EMS station utilities get paid? Does this mean...
They write a check.
Wow. So, it's not on here? Is it, it comes, doesn't still come?
Do we all pay a portion of it?
They're billed.
No. Perfect, thanks.
Any further discussions on bills? There are motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion is carried. I'm just gonna reference here, folks, for you that all the, all the funds are in line with budget right now. Make sure you kind of monitor these things. These are our bond proceeds, the general, the utility. You got a couple of deficits that we're gonna have to deal with. Nothing major. Nothing major. So reuse those, if you will. I also wanna point out, we don't need to go into closed session. And there's, there's an issue with the library, a person at the library. If you want details, get ahold of Peter or Sue or me. We'd be happy to share that with you. But the, what has transpired is, because there was an issue, the library acts independently of village board. They are taking care of that. The village, Leslie Salmon, who is the HR specialist at the Axley firm, is working with Peter and the library board to address this issue. And she said the village board should not move into closed session. So you're not going to. But you're entitled to know. And so contact one of the three of us and we have to share it. Okay, any announcements? Chair, none. Is there a motion to adjourn? By Natalie. Second by Troy. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Can I ask a question about the closed session? So then we could just pause, I turn that camera off, zoom in for closed session, and then turn it back on and we repeat? Right, that would be...
Okay. I didn't really think about it until I saw that on the agenda and I'm like, ooh!
Wouldn't have even thought about it.
Ooh, I don't even wa-